Good evening, the meeting will come to order. Call the roll please.
Mrs. De Silva?
Here.
Mr. Melody?
Here.
Mrs. Rigby?
Here.
And Mr. Valentine.
Here, and Mrs. Gillis is not able to be with us this evening. Pledge of allegiance, Dr. Marshausen.
At this point, I would like to invite up our friends from Indian Run Elementary School.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of regular minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the March 13th, 2023 meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. De Silva, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rigby. Questions or comments? Call the roll please.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Item D, approval of the agenda. It is recommended for the approval of this evening's agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Melody, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. De Silva. Questions or comments about the agenda this evening? Call the roll please.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Awards and recognitions, Dr. Marshausen.
Mrs. Venney for our Golden Shamrock Award winners.
I'm pleased to share we have two Golden Shamrock Award winners for this month. As you may recall, the Golden Shamrock Award has been a part of our district for over 30 years, started by Mr. Ed Putnaki. And we are going to start our first award with Deer Run Elementary School. I'd like to invite Dr. Portia Robinson and Jamie Allen up to the stand.
I thought I was gonna have to use my teacher voice. Good evening, Dr. Marshausen, to our board, to everyone in the audience. I want to take a moment to tell you about someone who is extremely special to our district, and this is Mrs. Jamie Allen. Jamie is an instructional paraprofessional, and she has been a staple to the Deer Run Elementary community for the past several years, and to the Dublin City School District for many years. She just shared with me that her first date in the district was April 4th of 2001. So she's been with us for 22 years. And her dedication and commitment to her profession and her devotion to the students is, it is unparalleled, truly is. As an instructional paraprofessional working with children in our specialized learning center, Jamie cares for the safety and well-being of our most precious students as they develop critical life skills to lead them into success in their future. She works collaboratively with the teachers and the staff in the building to create opportunities for our students, and she demonstrates punctuality every day as she arrives early and stays late to complete extra tasks to help our building teachers. Her dependability is consistently proven year after year by her near-perfect attendance. Jamie has always been someone that you can rely on to get the job done, and she goes above and beyond for any expectations that are set in front of her. During her time at Deer Run, she has put her heart and soul, truly put her heart and soul into supporting students with disabilities and their families. She goes above and beyond to do what is needed for her students and the staff, and she thoroughly enjoys her job, and this shows each and every day in her relationships with the Deer Run community. Jamie is truly deserving of this award, and her dedication to students at Deer Run is unparalleled. She truly embodies the culture of Dublin City Schools and the value that we are truly better together. So thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. This is very emotional for me. It's also the end of my career here in Dublin, so that's playing on my, my heart right now, too. I love the littles. I started with the bigs, thought I was there forever, but I'm, I'm, I have loved my Deer Run family and the kids and the people that I work with. It's, it's just been amazing. Thank you so much for this generous award. I really, 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 really appreciate it. Thank you.
For our next Golden Shamrock recipient, I'd like to invite up Dr. Jamie Stewart, principal at Davis Middle School, and Brett Ray, social studies teacher at Davis.
Good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. Brett Ray has been teaching for 35 years, 34 in Dublin and 32 at Davis Middle School. During this time, he's also served as an admin intern for three years. Many of these years, he also served on the DEA negotiations team. Coach Ray served for 32 years as football coach with 27 at Davis, four at Sciota, and one year at Kaufman. In addition, Mr. Ray has been a part of the eighth grade Washington DC trip for 30 years, serving as the advisor and planner of the trip for over 25 years. This includes a trip that he took with Sciota teachers John Witt and Chelsea Ray this year over spring break with a group of sophomore and junior students from Sciota whose DC trip was canceled due to COVID. Mr. Ray has also served as the team lead in the eighth grade at Davis. Brett was nominated for the Golden Shamrock Award by parents and students. Parents stated, "Mr. Ray has planned the Washington DC trip at Davis Middle School for over 25 years. He orchestrates the logistics with the planning company, the buses, hotel rooms, and itinerary while keeping the safety of the students at the forefront of all of his planning. It was comforting to know that my daughter was in Mr. Ray's group in Washington DC, to know that she was with an experienced leader, and the person that planned the whole trip was wonderful. She learned many things on the Washington DC trip and will have memories that will last a lifetime. All of the eighth graders came home with experiences and memories to share, all because Mr. Ray planned an awesome trip." Mr. Ray plans a Veterans Day assembly at Davis Middle School. Mr. Ray thought out every detail from the soldier stories that were told to the music and announcing the names of the veterans. It was a moving assembly full of passion and honor. Everyone learned a history lesson that day in the Davis gymnasium. Several students said, "Mr. Ray taught me that football is more than just a game and to never stop trying, even when I feel like there's no reason to try anymore. He taught me how important veterans are and what they have done for us. He has taught me lots of things about history, and he always knows how to put a smile on my face." Mr. Ray has impacted my life by making sure that DC was the best experience for me in the entire eighth grade, not just this year but for 30 years. The amount of time, patience, and hard work Mr. Ray put into DC will not be forgotten. Mr. Ray ensures that I have a good grade and I understand the topics to my ability in this classroom. Mr. Ray is a friendly face at all events and will be greatly missed at Davis Middle School. Coach Ray is retiring after 35 years of teaching at Davis. Not only has he served our community by teaching, but he has also been coaching for 30 years. He was our seventh grade football coach, and as a player, I can say he is an amazing coach. We didn't start out the season so well, but he never lost faith in us and kept our spirits up. I've never seen Coach Ray in a bad mood, and it rubbed off on the whole team. Unfortunately, I never got a chance to be one of his students, but off the field, Coach Ray was a gentleman and always had a smile on his face. This is why I believe Mr. Ray should be considered for the Golden Shamrock Award." Mr. Brett Ray.
Wow, thank you. It's an honor to receive this award, knowing that the students and parents nominated me is spectacular. It is an honor to receive the Golden Shamrock Award. I'm privileged, it's been around a while, so I'm privileged to have known several recipients. Couple of them are here tonight. They were my mentors and friends, and I'm humbled to be in that group with them. Thank yous. My dad, my dad taught me the example to respect your employer and to put in a good day's work. My mom taught me to listen to my dad. Together, they taught me my faith, a faith that teaches love for the fellow man and to treat others with care, and that's what I tried to do with my students throughout the years. I'd like to thank Davis. It was just more than a workplace. Davis is a home. My wife works there. My kids went there. Both of my kids have coached there, and it's just a very special place. Davis, or Dublin City Schools shaped my family. The staff at Davis is family. The community and parents' support is outstanding, and of course, I did a little bit of math. Over 3,200 students and 1,100 athletes and a whole bunch of kids to DC. They are what make it special, and it was my honor to serve them. Thank you to central office. You set high standards. You hire good people and you trust them to do the work. The cooperation with the teachers is amazing. You listen to them. I'd like to thank the association and Donna for providing the voice for the teachers to be listened to. I've had extremely well-respected principals throughout my career. One of them's here tonight, an older guy. It's been around a little bit. And our current administrators are amazing. So Jamie, thank you. I feel like I leave Davis in wonderful hands. I'd like to thank my family. Chelsea, who is a teacher at Sciota High School. Dublin City Schools brought her back, and it's an honor that she is continuing on in Irish Nation. My son Chad, thank you to the district. He's not able to be here tonight because he's receiving a scholar athlete award at Ohio State as a member of the football team. Lot of, a lot of pride for my son. My wife Terry, a former recipient of this award. She set the bar high. Her care for kids and love of teaching is unmeasurable. My career as a teacher, people would come up and ask me throughout my lifetime, "What do you do for a living?" And I was extremely proud to say that I'm a teacher. I was even more proud to tell them where I teach, Dublin City Schools, Davis Middle School. And I am sure that as a teacher and coach who've enjoyed over 34 years here in Dublin, that you people will make sure that that will never fade, and all employees will be as proud as I am to have worked in Dublin City Schools. Thank you so much.
At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Joe Bline and our Dublin Jerome cheerleaders to the podium.
Dr. Marshausen, board, thank you so much for having us tonight. I'd first like to introduce Ms. Ashley Small, our dean, who worked with the cheerleaders this year and has a few words.
Hi. My name is Ashley Small, and this is my first year at Jerome High School as the dean of educational leadership. I would like to say a few things about this dynamic group of ladies and their amazing coach. Since I am new to Jerome, these girls welcomed me with open arms back in July. I have had the honor to watch them grow as a team from them until now. These girls have grit, strength, grace, and determination. I am so impressed with each of them and the countless hours they get to put in to become state champions in several categories. You have set an amazing example for the Dublin community, and I am in awe of your skill and commitment to being state champions again. Congratulations on this incredible milestone, and thank you for representing Dublin Jerome High School. Now I'm gonna introduce Sir Carla.
Just Carla, that's all I get. Dr. Marshausen, President Valentine, and members of the board, on behalf of my coaching staff and myself, we want to thank you for taking the time to honor our athletes this evening. These athletes accomplished kind of the unthinkable. We had seven teams qualify for states, coming home with a fifth place, two third place, and four first place champions. In true Dublin Jerome cheer fashion, if we may, we'll present to you a little differently than most teams. To be in a circle of champions again, these teams truly embrace the "we get to" mentality. We get to do practice, we get to run a routine, I mean sometimes, right? We enjoy all those pieces, but tonight, they get to speak to you about their year. Emma Johnson and Lauren Bush will speak on behalf of their state championship teams in their senior year with Dublin Jerome High School.
Hi, I'm Emma Johnson, and I'm one of the four seniors on our team this year. Going into this season, we knew there would be a lot of pressure. We were going for consecutive titles on four of our teams, and nobody wanted us to win. We met at the beginning of the season to set goals and expectations. Holding ourselves and each other accountable was a big expectation we set. Even during our hardest practices, we kept pushing each other. This is the most talented group of people I have ever taken the mat with, but not a single one of us was satisfied with where we were at the beginning of the season. The drive we all had to get better made our routines better than in my four years they have ever been. When it mattered most, our teams were able to perform the routines we had trained all year to do. We were able to leave the mat with no regrets and took home four titles. Being able to compete on these teams and with these people has bought me so much happiness and made me a stronger, stronger person. There is nothing like Dublin Jerome cheerleading, and I'm gonna miss my team, who has become my family.
I'm Lauren Bush, and I'm also a senior at Dublin Jerome. I'm super grateful for the opportunities this team and program have given me. I used to dream of being a state champion but always thought it was impossible, until my first year at Jerome, I took home five state champions in a single day, and four the next year, and four again this year. I'm beyond proud of my team for what we have accomplished over the three years I have been here. I've never seen a more dedicated group of girls not only push themselves but encourage others in order to walk off the mat with confidence. This year was a very difficult year for all of us with tons of competition, and our primary goal was not only to the outcome of winning, but it was the feeling of having no regrets walking off the competition mat, which is what we did at state the past three years. Leaving with a total of 13 state titles is definitely not what I imagined, but the hard work and long hours in that hitting facility really paid off in the end.
You gonna do it? Go in the middle. Yeah, go in the middle, Emma. We'll go back outside so we'll get the chatty Cathy's out.
Members of the board, at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Dwayne Sheldon, AD at Dublin Kaufman High School, to the podium.
Thank you. It's my honor tonight to recognize two state champions, and I think when you think about this district, not only great parents, great families, teachers, administrators, students, but great athletes and great coaches. We're fortunate to have one of the best coaches in the state of Ohio at Kaufman running our wrestling program. He was elected state coach of the year last year, and this year won the fifth district championship, which is equal to a regional championship. They just call it district for, for wrestling. Fifth in a row, which the, the previous record was three. So I would like to introduce our head wrestling coach, who will honor our two state champions, Chance Van Gundy.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. First of all, thanks for honoring our two state champions this evening. Our first state champion unfortunately couldn't make it for health reasons. It's junior Omar Ayoub. I'll say a few things about Omar, then I'll talk about Ethan. Omar is a junior. He won his second state title this year. He took second in the state his freshman year as well. You know, with Omar and Ethan's leadership, as Mr. Sheldon said, we've, we haven't lost an OCC sectional district or dual regional title. So they've really helped, I guess catapulted our program to a whole new level with their leadership. Omar is a top 10 ranked guy nationally with, again, with his two state titles, and I think with this senior year, the senior class graduating, he'll, he'll probably slide in the top five to start his senior year. Other than that, he is committed to wrestle for the Nebraska Cornhuskers after he graduates from Kaufman. And again, he's not here tonight. Now I'm gonna talk about Ethan Burton. Ethan took fifth as a freshman at 132 pounds, which is not, not easy to do in a, I guess, in a weight class. It's filled with upperclassmen. Took second in the state last year, lost a barn burner in the finals by one point. Really drove him to bigger and better things this year. Not only did he win a state title this year, he's a top five ranked guy nationally at 157 pounds. As I mentioned earlier, his leadership has helped us win a lot of team titles as well. And he was also named academic all Ohio this year and last year, right? So, and Ethan is a junior, but he's already committed to wrestle for the Ohio State University. So we're gonna have him close to home, and we're excited about that. So without further ado, junior Ethan Burton. So without further ado, Junior Ethan Burton.
Mr. Valentine, members of the board, at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Pat Lozinski, the CEO of the Columbus Metropolitan Library, to share an update on an important anniversary and birthday that we're celebrating.
Great, thank you Superintendent Marchausen, Board President Valentine, members of the board. Before I start, just very quickly, or as I start, of course, we have a library board, and I see how much time they put in. So I know how difficult it is to be a board member. So on behalf of the library, we serve 10 school districts throughout the county. Thank you for your service and what you do for the community, it's really important. That's one. Secondly, I think two of you were on the board when we did the project for the now-new library. Let's see, 2017 or 18, so it still feels new to me. I think that was probably our most complex project, but turned out to be one of our best projects, and we're very proud of the work that we did with you and the ongoing partnership. So thanks for all of your work on that effort. I'm here tonight because we do serve 10 school districts, and coming out of the pandemic and learning loss and what all of has been experienced by students and families, we're just reminding the school districts in somewhat of a formal way by a quick presentation of what the library does, what we try to focus on, how do we try to partner with you to really be a big player in what we think of as the out-of-school time. And we think of that as preschool, after-school, weekends, and summer. And so I'm here tonight just to kind of give you a briefing, and I'm doing a low-tech version tonight. So you have a folder in front of you. If I ask you, just open the folder up to and look at the right-hand folder. You'll see there's a handout that actually has five numbered pages. And so very quickly, as we talk about our Young Mind Strategy, focusing on five areas. The first one, what you see are resources and programs that we provide for kindergarten readiness. So that's before you have them, but we have a big role to play in that space. Page two is actually a listing of the electronic resources that we make available to elementary students. Page three would be middle school students. Page four would be high school students. And obviously, after this meeting, we'll make sure that we send an online version of this. These products purchased by the Columbus Metropolitan Library are almost $1 million a year. They're valuable tools and resources for your students and parents to use. Doesn't cost us one more penny if you use it 24/7. So part of our message is just to make sure that we talk to you, we talk to faculty, we make sure that parents are aware of the tools that are out there as well. And then finally, page five in that stapled packet is just a listing of other support services for students and educators, and in particular, what we try to do to support high school graduation. You'll see some of those resources in place. So anything you can do to let your faculty and parents know about the resources is a help to us as well. On the left-hand side is, I want to point that out to you, it's a very valuable staff training and development program. It's called LinkedIn Learning. It's something that we've subscribed to for a number of years. It offers about 17,000 high-quality training videos across the spectrum of subject matters. Everything from early Microsoft Office certifications to someone wants to learn to read financial statements. My wife's an art teacher, she's used it for curriculum support as well. It's a great resource. The company does not allow us to cross-market with any other entity because, of course, they're trying to sell it to as many other entities as possible. But as long as you have a library card, that's a tool that's available to all of the teachers, other faculty, and of course, parents. And I think there's plenty of tools that would be of interest to your student, particularly high school students. And so I just encourage you to take a look at that. Two things before I wrap up. One, this is our 150th anniversary. The library was formed in 1873, eight years after the Civil War. By the end of the year, I'll expect you to be able to spell sesquicentennial, so we'll come back later to see if you can get that. But we have a year-long celebration, a passport program that will bring people throughout the 23 libraries throughout the county. Want to point out to you, July 15th and 16th, at the main library, we have the first-ever Columbus Book Festival. Think of it as the Art Festival, but for authors and books. We have 140 authors from around the country who will be there taking over Topiary Park. It's a big event, and hopefully, there will be representation from the Dublin school system. And then finally, in closing, the library was last on the ballot in 2010 with an operating levy, and we know we should all try to plan cooperatively. We look at the timing of various issues. We had planned to be on the ballot in 2024 next, but it is suddenly a pretty crowded ballot with the number of entities that are going. So I have no idea what your plans are, but I'm giving you some advance notice that's really shaping up to look like we will be on the ballot this November. So if that helps you in some of your planning. And again, we're from Dublin to Canal Winchester, Hilltop to New Albany, and all places in between. But I think giving you a heads up on that is, hopefully, is useful to you in your planning. So with that, let me pause and see if you have any questions at all for me. I thought there was a big crowd coming to see the library tonight, so you kind of burst my bubble when they all left right before. But anyway, congratulations on all the great work and the accomplishments of the district, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Pat, thank you for everything that you do to partner with the school district, the space you make available for us to use during meetings. It is wonderful to have a central location and a partner in our community that as we work together, we serve our taxpayers, our community, and our students well. So thank you for everything that you do and your leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Marchausen. I did forget to mention one thing, you know, the one complaint that we have continuously about the library. It's the same complaint all the time, why'd you build it so small? It's two and a half times the size of the old one. But I do want to let you know, we've signed a cooperative agreement with the City of Columbus on the Sheep Farm property on Case Road, which would be certainly serving Dublin residents. And we would see that as a project that gets developed in the next five years as well. And so we're excited about that because frankly, you have to take some pressure off of the success of this library. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Moving on to public participation. Nobody signed up for this evening. Board President, Board of Education comments? Any comments for members of the board?
Are we on committee? Reports yet?
Sorry, I didn't, I was trying to hit it. Yeah, you can report out on committees.
Okay. I did want to, so as the legislative liaison, I just wanted to remind everyone that if you would like to read the OSBA platform, look it over, see if there's any changes that you would like to make, we are allowed to submit amendments to that, but they have to be submitted by May 31st. And then I guess also, tech committee met right before we went to COSPA, and we spoke about, well, Kelly Ram went over the classroom display updates, Chromebook purchases, which I think are on the agenda tonight. We're getting a new HR system, which will be up and running, I think, by January, is that correct? We also talked about Infinite Campus and the timeline for training on that and the rollout to parents. We talked about updating wireless access points, which I'll let you talk about that if you want.
Yeah, just updating the wireless access points to be able to support, as everyone knows, there's more and more devices in the schools. So just updating that infrastructure to keep it current so we can support all those devices for the students.
That's basically it.
Thank you. We did have a BAC meeting last week at the Ohio, I thank you to Ohio Health for hosting us. We had a great meeting, and as Dr. Marchausen said in his report, we had two or three things on the agenda, and we only got through the first one because we, a lot of questions, a lot of dialogues, we ran out of time. And then there is a key communicator meeting tomorrow evening, or Wednesday evening as well. So from a Tolls standpoint, I don't have the enrollment numbers in front of me right now. I will email those to everyone. And then just a reminder that there is the Tolls School Board Dinner that they are hosting in a couple of weeks on a Wednesday evening. If you don't, haven't registered, please do, it's a great event. You get a lot of interaction with the Tolls students, get to learn more about their programs, and have a good dinner prepared by the Tolls program.
All right. Moving on to reports and action items from the superintendent's office. Okay, members of the board, some of you have been in communication with our partners in Union County and Jerome Township as we are looking at consideration of TIFs, tax incremental financing. Just kind of a timeline, in December of 2022, representatives from both Union County and Jerome Township came to a board meeting to share information about a potential 30-year blanket TIF over an area that includes Union County, Jerome Township, and is part of three school districts plus the Tolls area. And when we look at, as school districts, Fairbanks, Jonathan Alder, Dublin, and Dr. Hodley at Tolls communicate frequently about these potential TIFs. TIFs are used, generally speaking, as a means for economic development and as a way to build critical infrastructure to support economic development as municipalities find ways to attract business, industry, commercial residences to areas, especially as we're growing like this. The original conversation back in December of '22 was around a 30-year non-school TIF, which would make all of the school districts whole. The revenue diverted from the tax means would go to the building of infrastructure, but we would continue to collect our portion of that tax revenue. On Thursday, March 30th, we received notification from Union County that they would be filing for a 10-year 75% TIF. 1075, as they're typically referred to, and Chris and Scott probably have heard more about these conversations over the years, would be for a 10-year period, 75% of the tax revenue would be diverted for the infrastructure. And during that period, the school district would receive 25% of what we would normally or traditionally collect. 1075s do not require our approval, and 1075s only require 14-day notice from when we receive that notification. As school districts, we raised some concerns about the 1075, and Union County held a Zoom meeting with us on Thursday, April 6th, where we had conversations with the Union County officials, shared our concerns about the 1075 because really, a 1075, you're taking school district dollars to build roads, to put in sewers, to build infrastructure. And when you look at a 1075, you are simply diverting who pays for that because it puts the burden on us as schools. Our next levy would be higher. And not only that, not only would our next levy be higher for the citizens of Jerome Township and Union County in a school district that represents multiple jurisdictions, everybody's taxes would be higher to build infrastructure in Union Township and Jerome County. We were grateful that we felt heard. And then on Friday evening, wait, let me go back, on Thursday, so this was Tuesday was the meeting. On Thursday, then we got notice that we would be asked to consider a 30-year non-school TIF again, which is better for us. The timing with this, though, is a 30-year non-school TIF. We were being asked to waive the notice period so that they could be filed. And we were getting these conversations from both Jerome Township and from Union County. The superintendents got together and talked, and we sent both Union County and Jerome Township a letter where, one, we felt very much like the educational institutions that serve our school communities, that we were being placed in the middle. We were being asked to choose which entity we would either waive notification for or which entity we would approve their 30-year non-school TIF. In the letter that the superintendent sent, we asked for a 30-day cease and desist, ceasefire, whatever you want to call it. Everybody pause. And can we talk about this before it's three local school districts and Tolls that is being asked to choose sides between partners in Union County and partners in Jerome Township? And our ask is that Union County and Jerome Township get together, and they bring us something that they can agree on. So that as a school board and as the leadership of the school districts, we're not making a recommendation to choose between one of the partners that serves us. I am grateful that both Union County and Jerome Township have agreed to enter into 30 days of conversation before we're asked to make a decision. And there are some representatives from both Union County and Jerome Township here. And just so that we all kind of know what we're talking about, when we look at who we serve as the Dublin City Schools, we serve three counties, we serve the city of Dublin, we serve the city of Columbus, we work with multiple townships, including Jerome Township, Washington Township, Perry Township, to provide services to the various citizens and taxpayers who live in our community. And there aren't a lot of folks, and I'm going to steal some of the words from our cheerleaders, who get to work with so many different municipal partners. As Ohio's grown and as our school district's grown, we get to work with folks as we look at economic development, as we look at residential growth, as we look, as Pat mentioned, how do we time levies and how do we time requests for taxes for our citizens? So just keeping this in mind, it gets to be pretty complex. We have a lot of partners that we listen to and that we lean into and that we talk to when making decisions. So just tonight, I know that Bill Narducci and Jeff Stouch are here from Union County. I see Wesley Davis here, who's one of the Jerome Township trustees. I think in this period, I'm not inviting everybody up to the podium to have conversations, but if at the end of the meeting, if board members would like to gather or have additional conversations, they've come tonight to answer questions. And my hope is that in the next several weeks, we'll be able to have a conversation. And we've asked to be at the table as part of that. And we've asked to be at the table as part of that. So that when we get to that first meeting in May, my hope is I'm coming to you with a resolution that everybody's in favor with and everybody's in favor of and that we've come together. So that's where we are right now. I know Mr. Valentine, you had talked to a couple of people, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, I think at this point, conversationally, it's in the hands of the Union County, Jerome Township to hopefully come to a common, agreed-upon solution to our current situation. If not, we're going to have to navigate and figure out what's best for the district and do that together. I think it'll be our first time as, as this board, Mrs. Gillis isn't here, to really go down the path of dealing with TIF proposals. Scott and I have experienced this at least a couple of times through our years on the board. And at times it's easy, at times it's not. But the one question I did have, and you had mentioned this, because it's been illustrated in the communication from, I think, both entities, but that was our part in any sort of communication or presence at these meetings. Do you anticipate, I believe one, at least one entity had, had mentioned, hey, if you want to be a part of these discussions or sit in on these discussions, you'd be able to do that. Has there been anything more on that front? And if so, would you plan on sitting in on that, or how would that work?
Yeah, I would plan on sitting in on that at this point. And if I was not able to, we would have Mr. Kernar, a representative from, from the district. That was our request as superintendents. There, neither party is legally bound to have us as part of conversations. But I think one of the things that you've shared and Pat shared a little bit earlier, that, you know, these things don't happen quickly. They're, that library deal took you a year or more to, to get to those types of conversations. And we kind of started this months ago with me. My understanding is the two political subdivisions have been doing this for years, trying to come to agreement here. So it takes some time, but we have asked to at least be part of those conversations. I know one of our concerns is, is there potential multifamily? What does that look like? Although it could not be put specifically in the terms of a TIF, we want to build that trust. We want to be able to look each other in the eye. And if, if it's a, this is the TIF we're going to do and we don't plan to put multifamily, multi-bedroom apartment units here, I would like to be able to be there when we have those conversations.
And I appreciate that Jerome Township and Union County have continued to maintain at least some level of communication with us as a district. I would say that one of my ask and my hope out of this is that that continues to increase, given the presence that Union County is going to continue to have within the school district and the number of new homes. Because as you've mentioned, what happens here impacts far greater than just that area of our school district. There's going to be folks, depending upon where we land on this, that could be greatly impacted, depending upon what happens with future levy request.
Yeah, and as we continue to see that growth in our Northwest quadrant, which is where we're seeing the significant population growth, we've already started work on asking for elementary 15. We've already purchased land for potentially a fourth high school. That's where the growth is coming. Modular classrooms are being put in right now, when we look at the growth that's taking place up in Jerome Township. So yeah, that communication is critical and it does impact all of those different counties and residents that are part of our school district.
Of course.
Mr. Melody and Mr. Valentine, one, you mentioned you've been in previous agreements, and this is one little quirk with this one is, previously, we do have 30-year non-school TIFs that are established within the city of Dublin that you have not had to approve. There's a little quirk in Howard Vice Code where if the city, they can do that without the board approval, but in this case, you will have to approve it as part of, whether it's the township or the county or the joint. So just a little quirk, we do have non-school TIFs out there in the city of Dublin, but they do not have to require board approval, so.
Absolutely. Scott, Diana, or Tiffany, any questions or comments at this time? We'll make sure to get Mrs. Gillis involved in, and updated on the conversation as well at the appropriate time. All right.
Okay. Safety and wellness. Since our last meeting, the tragedy in Nashville has once again reminded us of the importance at every moment with our school safety. I am grateful that in December, we scheduled a community conversation for April 20th on school safety. We had our first planning meeting prior to the events in Nashville to lay out who is going to be there and what we're going to do and what the presentation will look like. Nashville hasn't changed those plans. We are on target. We are as prepared as any school district that I know of when it comes to our safety plans, but we want to be able to share those with our community. So on April 20th here, we will have Chief Pice, Mr. Collier, our SROs, some of our safety team members, like Matt, who's with us this evening, will be joining us as we go through a presentation and then answer questions from parents. We have been getting questions about things like modular classrooms and the egress and the, how do we move students around? We are also working on a safety and wellness playbook that will give parents resources when they have questions. And unfortunately, we'll give parents resources with how do you talk to your child if the television's on in the morning and there's a school shooting and your child doesn't want to go to school? What are the appropriate age-level conversations to have with folks? Our Joint Safety Task Force met last Thursday, which includes representatives from Union County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Patton was here, Chief Pice, Jerome Township Fire, Washington Township Fire, Columbus PD, Columbus Fire. And that Joint Safety Task Force meets multiple times per year to align and coordinate our response in the event that there is the unimaginable. But it is that thinking that allows us to hopefully avoid some of those potential crises. That partnership with our police and fire is critical. And when parents ask about safety plans, we lean into the safety experts. We don't tell them what they're going to do for us, they tell us what they need from us. Chief Pice and I had our monthly meeting this morning and talked about some of the things that are happening in the city of Dublin this past weekend. We work together to make sure that we're on the same page. So all of the board members are invited, the community's invited, and we will have that presentation available for the public, for people who are not able to make it a week from Thursday. On that same day, we will have our last, just open community conversation on Thursday morning. And then on Thursday evening, the 20th here, it'll be that safety-focused community conversation. Just to update you, and I've done this since I've been your superintendent, I had quarterly goals for the first quarter of 2023, and these are the goals that I shared with you in January. The goals are either completed or in progress. As we continue to still work on that February goal of staffing for 2324, Mr. Boni and his team have done exceptional work to get us to where we are today. I am proud that we are ahead of the curve in the hard-to-fill areas. And in the areas that aren't so hard to fill, we have a little bit more flexibility. But in those hard-to-fill areas, we jumped way ahead. As we look at the second quarter for this goal this year, we still have a couple coordinator positions to fill. Our focus area teams are meeting and getting together to set those annual yearly goals that we will be bringing to the board in August. And those first steps have been made. Dr. Schwanke and I are starting leadership coaching for members of our senior leadership team. And we will be doing some 360 evaluations. You saw my 360 last year. We're going to expand that 360 to other members of the executive team this year, and we will share those with you as well. In May, we get the five-year forecast. And that five-year forecast will really give us a preliminary look of where we need to be for future levies. We have to talk about what is redistricting, redistricting going to look like? Yeah, it's such a like Pavlovian thing, I can't say it. Redistricting conversations, if the levy passes and if the levy's not successful, what does that look like for us? And as I've shared with you before, we are really excited about putting together a Dublin University series for next year and to have all of those topics and dates published before the school year starts, so everybody can put them on their calendar. And people will be able to see the threaded conversations that go through all of next year aligned and focused to what we do. And then finally, in June, June's really get ready for August. But whereas we start looking at that, we've asked about a tech playbook, we're going to be teaching students R-Factor. I think Marty's a little bit ahead of that. We're going to do relentless leadership for our staff and we'll get those focus areas ready for release. So you can expect at the July meeting to get the updates on those things from me. Any questions from the board? I will have school calendars on the agenda for approval at the next April meeting. There is a 30-day requirement for when we have the first hearing to when we have board approval, and this meeting was too quick. So we wouldn't have had that, those 30 days.
Anything else from members of the board?
Okay, Will. And I'd like to congratulate Will as a, is the decision made?
Yeah, you can say it.
Will will be attending Harvard University in the fall with a really nice scholarship too, so congratulations on that.
It's been a dream of mine since fifth grade, so it's kind of awesome. But, okay, so you guys are talking about taxes and stuff like that. We're going to talk about comfort animals to begin with, so just a little difference between the two. So recently, we had a week at all three of the high schools called Hope Squad Week. And obviously, as you guys have heard, Hope Squad is the group of students who are dedicated to providing mental support to students across the district. And some of the highlights for the spirit weeks that we had at Emerald, we had a day for professional headshots, which was really awesome. Kaufman, we had a stress-less day. At Scioto, they had therapy dogs and these dogs were adorable. And then at Jerome, they gave out sticky notes with mints, which was apparently really nice, I would have wanted to admit. And they also had animals too, so that was cool. And then we had the celebration of learning at Emerald Campus, I think about five nights ago. And this is for the IB diploma students, specifically the IB diploma art students, to just kind of showcase different pieces of artwork. And it's just really awesome to see, you know, what the students are up to around the year. I'm not a very artsy person myself, but some of the designs, there was a dress with holes in it, like on a rack, and there was like mesh hands coming out of it, which I thought was kind of cool. So just some really neat designs. And then we had our Emerald Discovery Day, which was dedicated to learning about different cultures from across the world, and really just kind of celebrating the diversity present within our school district, which I thought was really cool. I personally spent most of my afternoon playing euchre in one of the math classrooms. And we also learned how to make Chinese dumplings, so that was really cool. And then we also had some good conversations about the strategic framework at one of our ambassadors' meetings, and the student board members were able to kind of talk about that and just kind of talk through the implications to the student body and what that looked like on the student level. And then a few weeks ago, some of the student board members were able to attend the State of the Community, which was a really awesome event. Dr. Marshhausen spoke at it, as I'm sure he's told you guys. And it was, again, a collaboration between the city and the district. But I think that a couple of the things that we kind of discussed afterwards that really stood out to us was just how intertwined the goals and the priorities between the city and the school district is, but also just the pride that the community and that the city has in our school district, and just how it's almost viewed as like the bedrock of our city, which I think is really awesome. And then finally, Keegan sprung this on me about five minutes before the meeting started and told me that he wanted me to tell you guys that the Dublin Act Youth Council is having a Harmony Musical Festival this Friday, April 14th, from 5:00 to 8:30 at the Dublin Park Pavilion. And there will be teachers from Kaufman who will be singing. There'll be Scioto instrumental groups, there's a cakewalk, there's raffles for gift cards. And the goal of this is to build community and to promote a drug-free lifestyle. So it sounds like a really cool event. I, it sounds like they're going to have some free cake there, so recommend going. Questions?
I just have a comment. I was able to attend the celebration of learning with the IB art students, and it was amazing. And I saw some cool dresses too. But yeah, they had different stations. It was great to talk to the students about how they were just so excited to be able to share their creativity and learn. And I think even during the, what was it, seniors, yeah, they also mentioned just how they are able to just really explore different mediums and different, I don't know, one girl mentioned crochet or knitting or something, just all kinds of different things. But it's a different outlet for them to learn. There was an IB history student who had this project, and she said, this is a way that is different than an AP class, because not only am I learning, but I'm getting to use my creativity. So it was really nice to be able to talk with everyone and just see the different projects.
Anything additional under superintendent's report? All right. Thanks for your report, Will.
Sure.
Moving on to treasurer's office.
Yes, just a few things on the agenda this evening. You see some appropriation changes there. Most of them are federal grant re, as stuff gets reallocated and moved around per ODE. We do the same, so we match those, that. And you see ones for our internal service funds and our student activity funds, and the 300s would be our athletics and our music programs, and the O21, most of those are our testing accounts. Not to worry, we just probably under-budget them a little bit, but there's always enough funds available between the revenue and the available cash to have those expenses. But just like anything else, when we get grants or anything like that, we need to have a proper appropriation so we can spend it. So, and that should take us through the rest of the year, without any more changes. We have one purpose clause this evening. We have Scioto High School's chess club. And then we have one donation from the Davis PTO to Davis Athletics for some purchase of uniforms. You may ask why they do that. I think that's Davis's PTO is kind of their priority. As I've seen over the years, many, many times, they donate to the Davis Athletic Program. So as far as Davis PTO is concerned. Any questions from anyone?
Pretty straightforward list of items. It is recommended by the treasurer of the Board of Education, approve items 7B, 7C, and 7E. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Rigby, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. De Silva. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes 420. Moving on to Department of Academics and Student Learning.
Okay, we have a lot for you this evening. We're excited to share. First of all, I want to start by thanking the folks that will be sharing the updated graded course of study and language arts resources. And I'll let Lori do the individual thanking there, but it's been a team effort and I'm just so proud to be part of it. Before we turn it over to Lori or to Mrs. Marple and Mr. Andres, though, there's a couple of things for your consideration tonight. The first is the rewriting or the revision of the Global Travel Handbook. Global travel, handbook was first developed in 2014 and then revised in 2020, but we found we needed to do some significant revisions. The biggest change is global travel used to be considered district-supported, no, excuse me, district-sponsored, which was absolutely inaccurate. It's now district-supported. And thanks to Jeff Stark and consultations with the legal team, the district does not support financially anything to do with global travel. We just provide the locations for them to meet, we allow them to share, to, to get travelers using our, our communication sources. And teachers, Dublin City Schools teachers lead these trips. So that's the main change, but what we tried to do is just really make it clear, the process for proposing and getting a trip and following through with it. So I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my administrative assistant, Nikki Hughes, who literally spent six months making this into the masterpiece it is, and she doesn't let a comma get past her. So thanks to Nikki. The second thing you will see is approval of resolution for an authorization of Chromebook purchases. This is partnerships with X-Tech Partners and CDWG. And again, I want to thank Kelly Ram and her team and the operations infrastructure team as well. This is a larger Chromebook purchase than typically we put in front of you, because when we first started to go one-to-one, we bought, that was a big purchase. Well, many of those are end-of-life now. So. So, um, we do need a larger purchase this year, and then we're hoping things will level out. So just to explain why it's a little bit bigger than, than normal. Now, I will turn it over to Mr. Andres for a quick update on the preschool.
Dr. Schwanke, thank you. I've decided to challenge myself, and I'm not going to use any abbreviations or acronyms tonight, so it might be a bit longer than usual. Um, if you look up there, there's a, a wonderful picture of one of our preschoolers. Um, we had a mobile farm come to the preschool the other day, and so there's a, a student looking at, um, some animals in a little pen. It was awesome. If you want to learn more about that, I'll stay afterwards, and we can, we can talk. So the first Dublin City Schools experience that many of our students and parents have is before they turn three years old, so actually at two. Um, and when we talk about our preschool, sometimes people will say, um, "Why do we have one? And, uh, can any kid in our attendance area go?" And the short answer unfortunately is no. Uh, why? Well, Rule 330151-11 of the Ohio Administrative Code is entitled "Preschool Children Eligible for Special Education." Basically, school districts are required to serve students with disabilities starting on their third birthday, which means we put in a ton of work for kids when they're two, and we serve them all the way through, sometimes the age of 22, so that's a long time. Um, every district does things a little differently, but here in Dublin, we treat our preschool very similar to an elementary building. We have excellent teachers known as early childhood intervention specialists, we have paraprofessionals, school psychs, related services staff, and many others led by Principal Vanessa Olinger. We use curriculum resources aligned with the Ohio Department of Education's Early Learning and Development Standards. We have an amazing playground, they have parent-teacher conferences, and they have the tiniest toilets that you'll ever see in a building in Dublin City Schools. Where our program differs, um, is that they have to comply not only with Ohio Department of Education standards, but also with the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services. What that means is we, we appreciate their support, but it's twice the paperwork over there. Each year, Vanessa and her team have to do the same compliance things that any local daycare has to do. We are a five-out-of-five star-rated program in what they call Step Up to Quality, uh, again, which is a rating and improvement system administered by those two state agencies that I mentioned earlier. We have 14 classrooms in that building, one teacher and two paraprofessionals in each one of those rooms. We run two sessions, similar to kindergarten. We have an AM session and a PM session. AM is for kids three and four, and the PM is for four and five. So if anybody out there has kids that age, you know nap time is very important, and that's kind of why we structured it that way. Classes are about two and a half hours each day, no more than 16 students, and that's part of a law that we have to follow. Eight students can have disabilities, and the other eight don't have disabilities. Those other eight are peers, and we have amazing peers, uh, in our program. They're important, so we create a, a learning environment for our students with disabilities. It's similar to what any other child would receive out in the community. We have 156 peers, and we're looking for a few more next year. We often have a waiting list. So if you know of anybody who has a child who will be three and a half years old by July 1st, sign them up. Peers do pay tuition, but our tuition is $140 a month for the morning session and $170 for the afternoon session. And as somebody who once paid almost $25,000 a year in daycare, I can appreciate those costs. We have 212 students with disabilities currently, and that number grows every week, because, again, unlike school age, the second a kid turns three, if we've evaluated them and identified them, they have to start that day. Um, most of these kids attend the program I've described, but some of them only come in for weekly speech classes, and others are served through what we call an itinerant model. And the Ohio Department of Education defines that as "services provided by intervention specialists or related services personnel which occur in the setting where the child, the child and the child's parents, or the child and the caregiver are located as opposed to services provided at a central location," which means not in our building, probably in their daycare or in their home. Um, not long ago, we recognized Regina Stevenson at, for Golden Shamrock Award, and Regina was an itinerant teacher here for many, many years. So to wrap up, uh, I want to share an email that I got a while back from a parent that I think illustrates, we have the opportunity to create a great first, uh, impression when a, when a parent and a child come to our preschool. And I think this quote summarizes what many, many parents have experienced over the years. It says, "Thank you, thank you, thank you for the thorough, thoughtful, and compassionate work you've done for our child this summer. As we read over her first individualized education program," not gonna abbreviate that to those three letters, "which coupled with her evaluation process must have taken hours beyond hours to craft, I was struck by how well you've gotten to know our sweet little girl. While her gap areas are easy to see and would be easy to fixate on, we're thrilled by how the whole process and product truly have built on her strengths and celebrated her progress for, uh, to set her up for success." So in the words of Mr. Boney, this concludes the student services portion of the agenda tonight. And if there are no questions, I'm happy to pass it to Mrs. Marple.
I just have one, Mr. Andres. Uh, if a parent is considering their child being a peer, what, what advice would you give? What, what's the process? Can they go and spend a day or, you know, just a little bit of time in the classroom to get kind of an idea of what it's like?
I would suggest the first thing they do is go to the website and just look at the requirements for a peer, so they know that, uh, that their child would be a good fit. And then second, uh, Vanessa's gonna love this answer, I would say have them call the building and talk a little bit. Uh, visits might be a little too much, otherwise we'd have people in those classrooms a lot because we do have kids with disabilities. Confidentialities is pretty big, but in general, I'd have them call, talk a little bit more about the program, and make sure it's a good fit for their child. Um, it's, usually we do have a waiting list, and I think we opened it up in December or January, so it's, now would be the time to reach out and have them call.
Mrs. Rigby, my, one of my children was a peer, and that's exactly what happens. You call, and then they talk about, talk through what strengths your child has, what they're working on, and, um, they're used to this. They're used to peers who are nervous.
All right. Good evening. We're still here. Uh, and thank you for your attention a little longer. Uh, Dr. Marchausen, Mr. Valentine, and Board of Education members, uh, tonight, the curriculum team has two items for your first read and consideration. The first one is the Graded Course of Study, which represents the Phase One curriculum work of our Performing Arts team. And the second item tonight is our English Language Arts Resource Adoption for K-12. I want to start by recognizing that this work is very collaborative. It involves many stakeholders, from our community, to our administrators, to our building principals, to our teachers and our teacher leaders. And tonight, we are blessed to have some teachers with us. Um, I always like to pause at this time of year and thank our teacher leaders, who are very involved all the time in the curriculum work, but that work ramps up around curriculum review, Phase One and Two. Um, and so I will introduce first our performing arts teachers that are here. I'm just gonna ask them to stand. Tonight, we have, uh, Mr. Jeremy Bradstreet. He is our, uh, Teacher on Special Assignment, leading performing arts work. Um, and it's been a pleasure to have a partner to think through some of this curriculum work this year, and I'm grateful for his partnership. We've both learned a lot through this process this year. Um, and then next to him is Chris McNannes, and Chris is our, uh, Content Lead for the District, uh, at the elementary level. And Chris teaches at Daniel Wright, and if you want to see magic in a music classroom, visit Chris's classroom.
Thanks, gentlemen.
So as we dig in first, uh, to our Performing Arts Curriculum Review, I mentioned that we're in Phase One, and, and as a reminder to you, this is where we look at, uh, considering what does an elite K-12 performing arts education do for our learners across the levels. This is where we start visioning. We start thinking about what do experts say? Uh, we surveyed our community and considered input, uh, from stakeholders, uh, students, our secondary students, our teachers, and also parents in the community. Um, and one of the things I wanted to share with you is that two things came out of our community survey this fall, this past fall. One is that there is no doubt that Dublin City Schools values the performing arts. Uh, there was much appreciation, uh, for the continuity and the dedication to the performing arts education, starting with our music rotation time in our elementary schools. Um, and then, you know, one of the great things about surveying the community is they share ideas, and, and, and many of their ideas are in par with conversations at the state. One of those is the introduction of dance, um, which, which we haven't added, um, but I wanted to share that feedback with you. There seems to be a movement across the state of Ohio to consider the role dance can play, uh, and sometimes that lives in the theater space, right? You've probably seen that. Um, so the first phase, after we consider all of that research, all of that input, is we draft a vision. And, uh, you can see, I'm not gonna read it to you, but on the two slides and also at the front of the, the Graded Course of Study for Your Consideration, you'll see this vision. And I just want to mention two things. The first thing, uh, is you'll see that there's a theme of, uh, performing arts being not just about the student experience when they're in our care, but also that it provides our students with skills and learning that will benefit them in their career. And not just a career in an area around performing arts, but that it has transfer to many areas. Um, we heard parents say that, um, and we saw that in, in student response as well. Um, so those career skills do transfer. Uh, so that's one piece. The other piece that you'll notice in the vision is a commitment in Dublin City Schools to collaboration, global awareness, um, making sure that through the arts, we're continuing to teach students to problem-solve, to think critically, um, and to collaborate. Uh, so that's the vision. After the vision work, uh, completes in, in, in mid, mid-fall, uh, we pulled level teams together, and that's where our leaders, our teacher leaders, um, joined their colleagues across elementary, middle, and high to look at the state standards, and this is where we sat down and looked at the learning outcomes for each course. I'm really proud of this work. Um, it's very easy in a district our size to not drill down into the work of our music teachers, our theater teachers. And we looked at every course. We gave our teachers time to think about what they do, uh, so that we can ensure they're doing it at an elite level. Uh, at elementary, that included our general music courses that students attend every four days. At middle school, uh, you'll notice that the Graded Course of Study takes our standards and, and separates them out, uh, not just by grade level, but also into the content areas of band, choir, and orchestra. And then at high school, we went all the way into things like our flag corps. What do they do? What learning outcomes do we want them to have? Um, and all different courses related to our band, our orchestra, our choir, and our theater. You'll see those standards in your Graded Course of Study, uh, organized by enduring understandings, and those are given to us by the State of Ohio. Those are creating, responding, performing music, and then connecting. Um, and then when you get into the high school, it's exceptionally long, and that's a change. The reason the high school document is so long is because this year, they, the state recognized the work that we do in performing art ensembles at that level, um, and that within an ensemble, there might be varying levels of skill based on student, uh, music ability, skill level, um, and, and experience. And so you'll see that the, the learning standards are organized into achievement levels of novice, intermediate, skilled, accomplished, and advanced. And our teachers, when the learning standard didn't clarify very well from the state, you'll note that next to it, there's actually, um, kind of a deconstructed standard that they wrote that actually drilled into, here's, here's what we're actually getting at with our students. Um, so with that, we'll take questions at the end, um, but I would like to shift to English Language Arts, which is in Phase Two, and I'm gonna invite our curriculum coordinator, Shannon Hunt-Stokie, to the podium to introduce a few teachers who are here tonight and share information with you.
Thank you.
Uh, as Lori mentioned, this work could not have been done without the invaluable efforts of our building administrators, our teachers, and our district leads. And I'd like to start by recognizing those district leads, so if they will stand. Here with us tonight, we have, um, for the middle school, Beth Honeycutt, and she's at Davis Middle. And for the high school, we have district lead Beth Cousin, and she is at Jerome. And unfortunately not able to be with us here tonight are our elementary representatives, Mandy Klein and Lauren Scott. Thank you, ladies. The ELA resources being proposed tonight come about through our Phase Two process. During this process, teacher teams audit the Graded Course of Study, the one that you all approved last year, to determine gaps in materials and standard alignment. These gaps, research, and student data are what drive our resource explorations. Through rich conversation and collaboration, teacher teams then decide what resources fit those identified areas of growth. Key stakeholders, including building administrators, teachers, special, specialists, support staff, and community members, were provided opportunities to examine those resources and give input in regards to such parameters as grade level appropriateness, student engagement, and alignment to grade level and content standards. While we have a continued commitment to classroom libraries and the internal process for which those texts are selected, what we are presenting to you tonight are the direct result of community and teacher feedback in alignment to our Graded Course of Study audit. At the elementary, we are continuing our commitment to structured literacy instruction and word study with the expansion of 95 phonics into grades four and five. With last year's approval and this year's implementation of 95 phonics at K-3, we want to take another step towards material and instruction that reflects the science of reading with the addition of decodables at the classroom library. At the second level, secondary level, we are seeking to create alignment with resources from Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt that will provide digital accessibility for students. This will, uh, this will be providing the middle school with a comprehensive resource of indoor literature and writable. This will allow students to have a connected and authentic reading and writing experience, with ample opportunity to collaborate with peers and teachers and receive formative feedback in a variety of ways. At the high school level, Select and Writeable will allow teachers to customize learning based on student needs, tackle areas such as grammar usage and mechanics and contextual ways, and provide a variety of fresh and engaging texts. We know that resource implementation is most effective when teachers are provided with professional learning. The curriculum department looks forward to partnering with building principals to support our teachers, and upon approval, we will work with our district leads, our principals, and our teaching and learning coaches to provide valuable implementation and ongoing support.
Thank you, Shannon. With that, I'm gonna open it up to any questions that the board may have, but before we go there, there was one question that came from a community member, uh, earlier this evening that I'll just start by addressing, and that was regarding, uh, whether, why, why we don't do pilots in curriculum, formal pilots. Um, and there are spaces in education where pilots are appropriate, um, and, and very helpful. Assessments are often a place where that, that could live, uh, technology as well. With curriculum, uh, we don't do complete program pilots. A, there is a lot of research and thought that goes into any decision that we bring to you, um, and at, part of that research is that our teachers explore those resources thoroughly and may try components in their classroom. Um, we want to make sure that we're not putting a pilot in place, that that would fail our learners. Failing our learners is different than a little bit of technology failing. Um, we want to make sure we're making wise, thoughtful decisions about the instructional materials in, going in front of our students. Um, so that is, is one of our big whys. Now, we know there is no perfect resource out there. Um, so that's why we have a cycle. That's why we have five or six years of implementing. We know it takes a lot of energy, support, professional development, and ongoing conversation to make sure that we're looking at our data, looking at our students, um, and that we're continually, uh, assessing. So just because we, we adopt something, uh, purchase something, doesn't mean we're not continually improving that as we move forward. And so if you have further questions about that, make sure you ask. But at this time, are there any questions from the board for Shannon or myself, or our lovely teacher leaders?
All right, there being, uh, or Mrs. De Silva, are you gonna say something?
No.
Well, D. Corey pushed off to the mic, her friend.
Yeah, I'm just, the wheels aren't turning, no.
Oh, we know where you work, and we have your emails.
Yes, I have many questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to superintendent's recommendation. It's recommended by the superintendent, the Board of Education, approve items 9A and 9B. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Melody? Is there a second? Second? No question, no?
Can we go back to the second? 9A is...
Global travel handbook?
So that one...
That should just be a first reading, shouldn't it?
Yes, it should.
So that... It should just be 9? 9B, okay. 9B. So it is recommended by the superintendent, Board of Education, approve item 9B, approval resolution authorizing Chromebook purchase. Again, is there any motion? Let's start this one over.
Motion?
Moved by Mr. Melody. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Rigby. Questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Mr. Stark, operations.
Good evening. I have a few items on the agenda here. A couple of them go together, and the first one is an approval for a resolution for a design architect for our preschool edition project. We are recommending BBCO Design LLC as our designer for the preschool edition. They were chosen from requests for qualifications. They are a new design firm for our district. They come highly recommended, and we are asking the board to approve their proposal of $511,875 for the design services. The preschool edition project is a relatively small project, but it is very complicated because of the stormwater issues that are there. So in addition to approving the architect, we're also asking to approve Ford &amp; Associates as our owners representative. And owner Mark Ford has done this before for us. He's got a very good relationship with the city and helps us along with the stormwater pieces, as well as to give us some auxiliary help on the project as we're balancing some others. And we're asking to approve Mr. Ford's proposal of $51,710. All this will be for the preschool projects and pending board approval. We will start the design process next week in earnest because we're trying to have the design and the budget relatively done, 50%, 60% of the design done, most of the budget done by June to give to Mr. Kern for future numbers that he'll need. The next item up is for our Riviera Elementary School that we are quickly trying to build here, and this is for the contractor. We put out an RFQ and then an RFP. This is quite a long process when you choose a CMR by ORI's code. It takes over a 30-day process. And we are happy to recommend Alfred Construction. Alfred has not only had a very good past history with the district, but they're also the most competitive proposal out of all the proposals we received. So it's a win on all accounts there. So we're asking the board tonight just to approve their proposal, and the fees attached to the proposal right now are minor. It's just their fees on top of it. Most of their fees, most of their money is made when we present you with GMPs because they'll get a percentage of the GMP. And we won't present any of those to the board until probably beginning later this year, and then some after a future levy. The next two items were RFPs that we put together, and typically we don't... An RFP is request for proposal. It's not a public bid. And typically, we do not go to the board for approval of requests for proposals. But both of these were RFPs for federal grant... We receive federal grant money, federal safety money, for radios and cameras. And when you do an RFP with federal grant money, we did our process, and I'm happy to say that our process met with everything that our council was happy with. But we stick close to legal counsel on that to make sure we're dotting all i's, crossing all t's. So the first one is to award BNC Communication for a not-to-exceed amount of $200,000. And this is for handheld radios. And the second one is for security cameras that'll go across the district for not-to-exceed amount for $400,000 to Bearcom. And those are the five items tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
I imagine that some of those items will be covered in the safety community meeting as well?
I bet they're covered.
All right. Questions or comments? It's recommended by the superintendent, the Board of Education, approve items 11A, B, C, D, and E. Is there any motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. De Silva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rigby. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Human Resources.
Good evening, Dr. Marshausen, Mr. Kern, members of the board. I will start tonight with the certified agenda. You will see the first part of that, there's two administrator resignations. One of them is in the HR department. Ms. Collins has accepted a great opportunity to be an HR director in a neighboring district, so we wish her the absolute best. You'll also see two administrative salary changes that are on the agenda. We worked with Dr. Julie Blevins to update the job description that lists her as the principal of Emerald Campus. That's one of those. This change helps to align the work that is happening in this building. And then Mr. Killian, who oversees our transportation department, also has a salary change that will align this position, make it more market competitive. There are five resignations and one retirement on tonight's agenda in the certified section. Deborah Warteding will retire from Wyandotte with 18 years of service in Dublin City Schools. We have 11 new hires that are on this agenda. And then attached, you'll find something we do every year around this time, and that's for our teachers that are up for contract, educators who are up for renewal, either get a one-year, three-year, or continuing contracts. And that's typically in our first April meeting, so they're all listed on here. You'll see several miscellaneous items as well included for your approval. One to six-period pay request that was not included at an earlier time that's on tonight, home instruction tutors, and then summer school work that is being performed by certified staff members. The supplementals and pupil activity contracts on tonight, they mostly cover spring athletics, but you'll also see requests for fall, next year, and then next year's sports as well. The only other is a vocal music request. Moving on to the classified agenda, there are three resignations and then five retirements. Briefly, Jamie Allen, who we heard from tonight, will be retiring as a parapro with 20 years of service in the district. Barb Hart retiring as a paraprofessional with 16 years in our district. Darlene Lewis with 14 years. Here will leave Scottish Corners as a cook and cashier, Scot rapier, leaves as a bus driver with 17 years in Dublin. And then Judy Smith will retire as a paraprofessional with 26 years in our district. We wish all retirees very well. And then you'll see 11 new hires on this agenda as well, along with salary changes and an unpaid leave of absence. The last are nine salary changes and then the two unpaid leave of absences as well. And as Mr. Anderson said, that concludes my portion of the agenda tonight.
Only one question, not necessarily a question, but just for clarification for the public on the change for Emerald Campus. There's been some history to that position, not necessarily being labeled a principal. So I think it could be something that members of the board may be asked in time, so if we don't mind just sharing that in public?
I think over time, we've been in a place where the coordinator and multiple coordinators, as we go through things, people just know the title principal. So when you know who's in charge, who's in charge of a building, there's a principal who's in charge of the building. And as we've evolved and the programs have become more stabilized, our IB program has an IB coordinator who runs the IB program. Lori Misi runs our academies. We have hired now a new leader of our paths and bridges programs. When people come in the door, we've gone out of our way now to make an office down here on the first floor. And when people come in, the title principal has a meaning as a building leader, and that's why we've gone in that direction.
Awesome. Thank you. It's recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve items 13A and 13B. Is there any motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Melody. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. You just did that one.
I'll do it.
Mrs. De Silva. Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Reports from the Office of Public Information.
We've had a lot going on in our learning community over the last week or two, and I'd like to highlight two events, one that is brand-new and one that is a standing tradition. First, the First Annual Jerome DEP Energy Fair took place last Wednesday at DEP Elementary School. There were busloads of students from Dublin Jerome High School who spent part of their day helping DEP students to learn about energy and sustainability. And a big thank you to the staff, teacher leaders who organized this event, Ashley Dolan Smith and Erin Marr, and our community collaborators, the Ohio Energy Project, the Shared Power Network, and IGS Energy. This event definitely was a huge success. I know a lot of us here got a chance to see it firsthand. It was amazing, experiential learning. It was authentic. You could feel the energy in the space, in the gym, where kids were creating and problem-solving and collaborating, a lot of those skills that we want to see them exercising regularly. And having that older peer, the peer models with the younger students was just great, great leadership development for our students and models for our younger kids. The next thing I'd like to share is our Work in Dublin Job Fair. This is a standing tradition. It's a standing partnership with the Dublin Chamber of Commerce. There were nearly 700 of our ninth through 12th grade students who participated, and it was held at Sciota. So thank you to Sciota's team for hosting this event. We had a collaboration to make this happen. There were over 60 local businesses that were present that spoke with our students. They sought out applicants for seasonal, part-time, full-time, and internships. This is the second year that we've done this as a during-the-schoolday event so that students had access to attend. In the past, it was at Jerome High School on the weekend, and not all of our students were able to make it to that event. So this has really increased the accessibility of this event for all students at Kaufman Jerome, Sciota, and Emerald Campus. The other thing to note, this event is not just about getting a job, but it's an opportunity, a first opportunity for many of our students to get to talk with employers, to show up with a resume, to speak with adults about their skills and inquire about positions and learn how it all works. And that's very valuable. We do a survey every year, and we're about to do that with the students who participated to tell us what they got out of it. Last year, they told us that very thing. It was worthwhile for them just to experience it. We know a lot of students do get jobs from this event. My own son did last year. It's an event that we think will continue to be successful in the future. I'd like to give a special thanks to those who helped make it possible, in addition to the Chamber of Commerce and their partnership, some of our own team, Keevern and Tanya and Laura, our central office team, as well as our building principals and our transportation department. We're all essential to make this a success this year. Thanks.
Any additional questions for Mrs. Bennie? All right. Items for board discussion or future agenda items?
I just have just a couple of questions as they relate to, number one, our calendar with our updated religious holidays and going forward, because I continue to get, and I'm sure you all do too, questions about why decisions were made. For instance, you know, a lot of people in the community think that we just removed Good Friday from the calendar, and we all know and we discussed it, it was never on there as quote-unquote "Good Friday holiday," but just kind of traditionally fell that way. So looking forward, as we make the changes, I'm just wondering for clarification if we could put something, a statement on our webpage, or a statement directly on the calendar as to what we're doing and why we're doing it, and what that's going to look like for each faith family?
Yeah, I think it would be very reasonable to put a... And I know that Mrs. Bennie and I have talked about a form if parents wanted it, but also just a statement that if your faith family would like to take any day off school, you just need to let your teacher know. And we will also then publish the list of the holy days that... And we've shared that list with you, but we can share that list on the website, the same list that our teachers have, of the holy days that are recognized. I also believe if the Senate bill continues to go in the direction it's going, that it may become a law by the time we get to next school year as well, which is something that we could also cite. So yes, I think we can clarify that.
Okay. And my other question is regarding that as well, because I know we do a great job celebrating different faiths and, you know, through newsletters that come home, different faiths celebrations in schools, cultural, you know, awareness in classrooms. But what I found striking is we just came off the holiest week in the Christian calendar, and I didn't notice anything, not one thing from my own son's school, but then in talking to other parents, it was not mentioned that there was anything significant about this past week for the Christian community. So I guess my point to this is I'm all for celebrating religions, and I don't want to diminish any one religion. But in light of that, when there are some religions that are being celebrated and talked about, and then there are others that don't even get a mention, I think we should address that.
Any additional questions or comments?
Just to clarify, though, the district is not celebrating any religious holidays. We're not celebrating, may acknowledge, that people in our community are, but we as a district are not.
I think the challenge becomes, and I know personally, on my Twitter account, I used to try to hit every holiday and recognize every holiday by putting something out for the people who celebrated it. And I found that if you miss one, you offend people. So I just stopped putting out any of the faith-based statements from my personal Twitter account, because when you're the superintendent, your personal Twitter account's also your professional Twitter account. I think we will probably have the conversation as soon as Thursday, that we will probably stop putting out individual things that would say, "Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas," recognizing those and just... Because right now, we find that if we forget one, we offend people at different places. So it will be a conversation that we will be having. I don't think when someone puts out "Happy Easter" that they're saying that from a school perspective, that that's the holiday that we're celebrating. But I also know that in this time in our country where we are right now, we have to be mindful that it's all or it's not. And all being all in an increasingly diverse community gets more difficult to keep up with.
Any additional comments? Motion to adjourn. Is there any motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Rigby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Melody. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Chris.
What do you got?